Looks like it's 6:05 PM, so let's call the meeting to order. And this is the meeting of the Town Council of Yucca Valley for Tuesday, November 19th, 2024, at 6:05 PM. So first, let's have our call to order.
Councilmembers Abel.
Here.
Dennison.
Here.
Droz.
Here.
Schooler.
Here.
And Mayor Lombardo. And Mayor Lombardo will not be joining us, he has excused for this evening.
All right, thank you. And I'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, how's that? So let's do the Pledge of Allegiance. So, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please stay standing if you can. We have our invocation led by Pastor Bill Wilcox of Living Hope Church.
Let's pray. Almighty God, Holy Father, Righteous Judge, we come before you this evening to give you thanks for the many blessings you have poured out on our lives and for the many challenges and uncertainties we've faced in our lives that you have seen us through and that you have used to give us perspective and make us better humans. I thank you for these council members who have given themselves in service to their community by serving on the Town Council. As they undertake the business of the town this evening, I ask that you undergird each one with wisdom and discernment, that they may make decisions with clear perspective for the good of everyone who lives in Yucca Valley. I thank you also, Father, for the town staff, whose diligent effort and tireless service keeps our town running. As we celebrate the Thanksgiving holiday next week, may we remember to give thanks for those many first responders who will have to work during that time. I pray for those brave men and women in fire protection, law enforcement, and emergency medical services who put themselves in the line, on the line each and every shift to protect and serve the residents and visitors to our basin. We pause this evening to pray for the United States of America. We thank you for this remarkable experiment in liberty that began 248 years ago. We've just passed another election, and as we were reminded after the 2020 election, so also today, we are reminded of what is said in your word, that there is no authority except from God, and that those which exist are established by God. Thus, we pray for those elected in this cycle to govern with justice and decency, and that they would, if they have not already, come to the knowledge of your salvation. Finally, I would like to pray for the men and women of our military. Grant them good situational awareness, clear purpose, and effective mission success. I ask all these things in the name of him who was, and who is, and who is to come, our Messiah, the Lord Jesus. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Wilcox. Okay, do we have any presentations, introductions, or recognitions tonight? I don't know if we do. Curtis? Presentations?
Not today, sir.
Not today, okay. Okay, so let's move forward to the approval of the agenda. So the recommendation is to prove the meeting agenda is prepared.
Mayor Potem, I'll make that motion.
One second.
Councilmembers Abel.
Yes.
Dennison.
Yes.
Schooler.
Yes.
And Mayor Potem Droz.
Yes. Next is consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are routine matters or formal documents covering previous Town Council instruction. Hold on, I'm trying to open my glasses here. There we go. And items are enacted by one motion, and a second without separate discussion unless a member of the Town Council or staff requests dialogue on a specific item at the beginning of the meeting. So requests for public comment on the consent agenda items should be filed with the town clerk. So does anybody have any, anybody in the public have comments on the consent agenda? Okay, let's take it back to the council. Does anybody want to remove anything or approve the agenda?
Mayor Potem, I'd go ahead and move the consent agenda forward as presented.
One second.
Councilmembers Abel.
Yes.
Dennison.
Yes.
Schooler.
Yes.
And Mayor Potem Droz.
Yes. Next is department reports, number six, youth commission appointments. And it looks like we have a lot of youth commissioners out there. That's great.
Yes, Mayor and Council. With us this evening is Recreation Supervisor Clayton Raridan to present the report.
Mayor Potem, council. There we go. Test, test? Yeah, good? Okay, there we go. Mayor Potem, council, thank you for this. Before you is a staff report for the 2024-25 Youth Commission Appointments. We bring this to you every year. The Parks Recreation and Cultural Commission reviews those and moves them forward to you. We have one additional Youth Commission application for your consideration. It was submitted on October 2nd. The application is complete and from a returning staff member that was omitted by accident from the Parks Recreation and Cultural Commission staff report as well as yours. So that individual is Jaleah Falcon, and she's in good standing and also recommended among the rest of them. So we have a total of 26 applicants for you this year. Nice big crowd. Those individu, those individuals are a broad mix of students, 17 high school, 19 middle school. They represent eight different schools in the Morongo Basin, online, and home schools. There are 14 new youth commissioners and 12 former. The Parks Recreation and Cultural Commission voted to waive the 20-person limit and move forward with all of those applications. The essays and letters of recommendation have been attached for your review, and the returning youth commissioners are only required to submit an application. They're not required to include an essay or the letters of recommendation a second time. So those have been admitted from that packet. At this point, I'd like to invite the youth commissioners up. Introduction, just name, grade, school, and a little bit about themselves or why they wanted to join the Youth Commission. And we're going to begin with last year's chair.
Hi, ladies and gentlemen. I am Sophia Abbott. I am a 10th grader at Yucca Valley High School, and I was last year's chair. And that taught me a lot. I liked, of course, giving orders sometimes, okay? And I liked how I learned a lot of responsibility within the role, because a lot of people, they came to me for a lot of the answers for stuff, which I mostly knew. Still gave answers if I didn't, but that's okay. And I just learned a lot of responsibility and like integrity within Youth Commission. I really liked giving back to my community, because I've lived here my whole life. And so, working with multiple different age groups, we go from elderly to young kids, it was amazing. And I just really liked just getting to know everyone and helping out my community. Thank you. Oh, and it's my third year.
Awesome.
Hello, everybody. My name is Acacia Smith. I was last year's vice chair, and this would be my fourth year on Youth Commission. Youth Commission has been something that I always look forward to every single year, because every term is just, it brings a lot of bright energy and happiness to my life, seeing the smiles on people's faces at events and knowing that I get to do something so good for a community that really has been my home for so long, and getting to meet a ton of awesome people and just getting so many new opportunities. And I'm so glad that we have so many applicants this year, because I really think that with the big commission, we're going to be able to do amazing things. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kalea Powell. This will be my second year at doing the Youth Commission. I'm doing an online school. It's called Liberty University Online Academy, and I'm in 11th grade. My favorite thing so far about doing the Youth Commission is definitely meeting everybody and getting a part of the community. I loved working at the senior center, it was one of my favorite things. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jackson Flanders. I attend Lock and Ten, Lock and Ten Middle School. I'm a 7th grader, and I would like to be part of Youth Commission to help the younger kids in our community.
Hello, my name is Maxton McMahon, and I attend a homeschool, I lead exploration. I'm 7th grader, and I want to serve my community.
Hello, my name is George Ringdell. This, wait, I forgot. Okay, my name is George Ringdell. I am 10th grade, had to think for a minute, I'm homeschooled. This would be my second year doing Youth Commission, and I really do think it is a great opportunity to give back to the community that I've lived in for pretty much my entire life. And yeah, thank you.
Hi, I, hi, I am Milo. I am 14. I'm in 8th grade. I'm homeschooled. This is my second year on Youth Commission, and I've lived in the high desert my entire life, and I'm really excited to give back to my community. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Neil. I am in 11th grade. I'm homeschooled. This is my second year doing Youth Commission, and I've been looking forward to it. I enjoy being a part of the community and getting to meet all kinds of wonderful people. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Gary Abbott. I go to Lock and Ten Middle School. I'm in 8th grade. This is my second year doing Youth Commission, and I like Youth Commission, because it's like, you get to meet a lot of new people and serve your town. Yeah.
Hi, my name is Eden Youngman. I'm in 8th grade. I attend Lock and Ten Middle School. And one reason I applied for Youth Commission is to help communicate with the youth of our community. And yeah, thank you.
Hi, my name is Angela Miranda. I go to Yucca Valley High School. I'm a sophomore. And one of the reasons that I applied to Youth Commission is to contribute to my, to my community and to learn new things and meet new people.
Hi, my name is Madison Murphy, and I go to Lock and Ten Middle School. I'm in 8th grade, and I would just really like to join Youth Commission to give back to my community.
My name is Alyssa McNeil. I'm in 8th grade, and I go to Lock and Ten Middle School, and I want to join the Youth Commission to be a part of the community.
Hi, I'm Ricky Abbott. I go to Yucca Valley High School, I'm a 10th grader there, and I really want to give back to my community.
Hi, my name is Abby Wagner. I am homeschooled, I am in 10th grade. One reason I would really like to join the Youth Commission is that I would love to serve my community and make more connections within it, because I've lived here my whole life, and I just would like to serve it a lot more than I already have been. Thank you.
And that concludes the staff report.
The recommendation before you is that the Town Council appoint the applicants recommended by the Parks Recreation and Cultural Commission to the 24-25 Youth Commission, and authorize the Parks Recreation and Cultural Commission to review future applications and make subsequent, subsequent recommendations on behalf of the council. I'm happy to answer any questions after public comment.
All right, thank you, Clayton. Is there anyone in the public that would like to comment on the Youth Commission? Any parents that want to brag about their child? Okay. Okay, great. Any council members want to say anything? Go right ahead.
Sure, I don't think the parents need to brag about these guys. They're, I read the application essays, and very impressive, as well as the letters of recommendations. So I think we have a stellar group, and welcome back to the roughly half of you that are coming back after previously serving. So thanks for being part of it, and looking forward to a really good year.
I'm really excited to see we got a nice cross-section of students in our, our community, young people. Again, thank you so much for serving the community. I think you will find it very rewarding, and I appreciate all the younger Lock and Ten or homeschoolers, the younger students, bringing in some new ideas perhaps, and also maybe stay with us for a few years. So welcome and congratulations. I know your families are very proud of you. Continue to really encourage other students in your school or in your neighborhood to get involved or come to our events, and we, again, appreciate your input, because we're not the youngest guys in the room, so it's good to hear from the youth on what we need to do for programming.
Councilmember Dennison.
Yeah, that's true. A lot of poise tonight, thank you, and congratulations to all of you for that. And I'm very happy to see that about half of the list tonight are new to the Youth Commission, so thank you for that. And the PRCC made a great recommendation. I agree with it 100% that I don't think you could remove any of the members today, you know, that we have over the 20 limit, because it's a well-balanced mix. And I was also happy, which I have seen more, just smaller incremental changes in homeschooling attendance into the PR, or into the Youth Commission. So thank you for taking the time to invest in our town. Most of you mentioned you'd like to get more involved in your community. And as Councilmember Abel said, absolutely, there's seats up here, and it'd be nice to see someone that's been here most of their life understand our community and take a leadership role someday. Doing a great job. Thank you.
I just want to say you, you were all impressive, and everybody spoke well, so that's really great that you can speak that well. I know you get nervous, some of you do and some don't, but everybody did really well. So thank you so much, and it looks like it's appro, well, do we vote on this? Yes. Yeah, so I'd like to recommend that we approve the members of the Youth Commission that have been recommended.
And Mayor, I'll go ahead and second then. Or Mayor Potem, I'm sorry.
Councilmembers Abel.
Yes.
Dennison.
Yes.
Schooler.
Yes.
And Mayor Potem Droz.
Yes. Thank you. Congratulations. Can we all take a picture?
And then Mayor Potem and any of the council members that would like to come up, we'd like to get a photo of this year's group.
Let's all go up.
Yeah.
Bring them inside.
Watch the corners, come on up. Hide behind you.
Can you throw up the logo?
Okay, you put the logo up on the screen? Oh, yeah, good idea.
Congratulations.
There you go. Congratulations. You guys.
Oh, yeah. Everyone here.
Hey, Leslie, if you get the photo, we can also send it to Clayton, and you can distribute it electronically to the entire group, so everybody has one.
Good, or do we need to move in? Yeah, if you guys can squish in a little bit.
Turn sideways, come in a little bit. Turn sideways, come in a little bit.
Perfect.
We're gonna work together.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Cool, you got it? Okay.
And then, parents, I'll meet everybody in the hallway just to debrief and go over the last couple things. Thanks.
Cool, we'll meet in the hallway.
And council, I'll encourage anybody that wants to stay and experience a full council meeting to come back in after we talk, so.
It's incredible. No, not at all.
There's more youth commissioners. So, we're just a town.
Yeah, that's true. We can start paying them to work here. Okay. Thank you again very much. Now we're moving on to department reports again, but item number seven. So this is the annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year that ended June 30th, 2024. I would assume that's Jordan.
Hi, Mayor and Council. I will, might be on the screen, I might not. This evening, we are presenting for council and public review, the annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal year ending June 30, 2024. This evening, we've invited our audit partner for the year, Mr. Scott Mano from Rogers, Anderson, Mallody &amp; Scott, our audit firm contracted with the town, to present some of the details of the audit. So once he gets through that presentation, then I'll be available for questions after public comment. Thank you.
Actually, first, let me go first. I'm sorry. My name's Scott Mano, I'm the partner at Rogers, Anderson, Mallody &amp; Scott, partner on the audit engagement for the town. I brought Isella along to give the presentation with my support.
Well, my name is Isella Bruseno. I am a senior accountant at Rogers, Anderson, Mallody &amp; Scott, and I am here presenting on behalf of the auditor, auditors for the town. So as Jordan mentioned, that we just did the audit for fiscal year ended June 30th, 2024, and I just want to say it's a pleasure to be here, and thank you for having us for your audit this year. We appreciate it. So I just want to talk a little bit about what we do, what our responsibilities are as an auditor. So one of our, our responsibilities is to ensure that the town's financials are in conformity with generally accepted accounting principles, which as accountants we call GAAP. And, and what we do is, we perform the audit, and at the end of the audit, we express an opinion on management's financial statements, so the financial records, to ensure that the financials are fairly stated in all material respects and in conformity with GAAP. So there's a, there's a process to it, but what we do is, we provide reasonable assurance, just not absolute assurance. But what we, what we do is, we provide an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion, and is the highest level of assurance that one can get, since absolute assurance is not possible. And another thing that we do is that we also assist management in compiling the annual financial statements. So we call that the ACFR, the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, which we have brought copies of today, and more than likely you will also. All right, so there, with the audit process, so there's two main portions, two main areas that we have the audit for. So we have the interim portion of the audit, and we have the year-end portion of the audit. So the interim portion of the audit is typically going to be done in, during the fiscal year, so a little bit before. And so what we do here is, we do an internal control review and a risk assessment. So by internal control review is, we look and see what controls the town has implemented, and we perform sample tests on those controls to make sure that they are operating effectively, and they actually are supposed to do what, what they say they're supposed to do. We test all of these controls, and then at the end of the testing, then we come up with our risk assessment and determine whether the town is going to be considered at a higher or low risk. In this case, the town is considered low risk. And so what we do is, after we determine that they're low risk, then we go on to say, okay, what are we going to do in the year-end portion of the audit? Year-end portion of the audit is going to be after fiscal year end. So fiscal year is over, books are closed, year-end journal entries are being, are posted. Then, we're going to go in, and we're actually going to go and do our review over the, over the town's financial records, the actual numbers. And so this can actually, this is what we call substantive procedures. And so that can come, that, that can, it can be many things. So we might review supporting documentation. So for expenditures, we might review invoices, construct, checks, and actual supporting documentation of expenditures, expenditures that actually occurred. For every, any revenues, we might review receipts, grant agreements. Another thing we do is, we also confirm account balances, so that would be any banks, bank account balances. Account, we will reach out to the bank institutions and have them confirm the account balance, and then we will compare that against what the town has in their records. And then another thing we do is, we perform analytical procedures. So we might do this over, you know, revenues or expenditures. We might compare prior year to current year and see, okay, we noted that this expenditure or revenue increased significantly, please advise us to why. And then at that point, we would go on to work with the town's management and inquire with them as to the reason, and they would provide their response. And might I say, the town's management has done a really good job at providing all of our responses to our inquiries accurately and quickly. All right, so another thing we do is, we also read the council meeting minutes. So what we see here, what you guys are doing all the time, this is something that we read almost every day. This is something that we do to gain an understanding of the entity. So if we are doing tests over capital expenditures, we might see that there are expenditures related to a particular project. We might scan or review the minutes to under, you know, to make sure that those expenditures are actually in line with what has actually been approved in the minutes. We also do the GAN limit agreed upon procedures. So the town will have their annual GAN limit appropriations limit calculation that gets done every year. And so town will provide that to us via resolution. We'll have our own calculation based on whatever indexes are available, and then we will compare the calculation, the town's versus ours. And then after that, we also check to see that the revenues did not exceed the limit. Another thing we do is, this is kind of general, so like, review and obtain relevant documents. So this is like part of the audit process, but we also read through any contracts or debt agreements. So if there's, if there's any debt, then we will read through the agreement. If there's any covenants that have to be covered, we have to check for compliance. That is something that we will also look into. So after performing our auditor procedures, then we're going to do, we're going to compile our financial statements. So then, after we have our audited financial statements, and we will compile our note disclosures as well, and we do this in coordination with the town staff. So we've worked alongside Jordan and her team throughout the entire process to make sure we compile this. And you'll see, once you guys get ahold of the ACFR, there is a, there's a few items that you might want to note. So when you open it, there's going to be a letter of transmittal, which is going to be an introductory letter for the ACFR. After that, you'll see a management's discussion and analysis, which will bring up key points that occurred throughout the year that you guys might want to make note of. And then we also have statistical sections. And then, we also have, and after we compile our financial statements, not only that, we still have to go through a review process. So we have a team of auditors that will work on the audit. After that, it goes through a review through a senior, and then after that, it goes through review by an engagement partner, which in this case is Scott, who has many years of experience. And after that, we can actually, you know, come to a conclusion, make sure, okay, are, are the town's financial records in conformity with GAAP? And do, are we going to provide them an opinion? And basically, our audit work papers should support our opinion. And in this case, the town got a clean opinion, an unmodified opinion. Let's see. And then, another thing that we do is, we also issue some additional year-end letters. So we also have noted some internal control and compliance letters, SaaS 114, those charged with governance. So these are year-end letters that get sent out alongside the ACFR, and no any instances of noncompliance. In this case, we did not note anything, no instances of noncompliance, everything looked good. But these usually get issued alongside the financial statements. Measure Y and measure Z. So for these, we look to see, we look at measure Z and measure Y funds, and we are doing this as instructed by the town's ordinance. And we are doing this as instructed by the town's ordinance 263 and 264. And we do substantive procedures, just like how you would do the audit. And we review supporting documentation of those funds balances. And we also check for compliance with the ordinances. In this case, we did not know any instances of non-compliance and we did not report and we did not know any negative findings. All right, do you guys have any questions?
No, I don't, the public, well, was Jordan going to talk anymore? Or should we go to the public comment? I guess we'll go to the public comment.
You can go to public comment, no problem.
Okay, so is there anybody in the public that would like to comment on this item? Item number seven? None? How about the town council, anybody?
Great report, thank you. A lot of hard work in the back end of that to make it happen.
Mayor Protem, if I might just add one additional comment. Just a reminder for the council and the public that your independent auditor is appointed by the council. They don't report to town management, they report to you directly. And we have to facilitate their activity, help them through that activity. So thank you for your professionalism this year and it's been a pleasure to work with you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Do you like to read in your spare time after all that reading?
Oh, oh my God, I can't get enough of it. But yes, a lot of reading, lots of contracts, lots of agreements.
Just for fun.
Yes, I had to get glasses recently. Well, thank you for having us, we appreciate it.
So that was a receive and file and I assume Jordan is done, is that correct?
You might as well keep me on, I'm doing the next.
You're doing the next one. Kind of assumed, thank you. So next is number eight, year-end budget report and related reserve policy allocations for the year ending June 30th, 2024. So Jordan, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. See Mayor there, Mayor Protem and Council. I'll go ahead and share my screen actually for the AV team so that I can man the PowerPoint here. So if you can just bear with me one moment. All right, so we are sharing the summarized version of that very long audit report in comparison to budget. So we'll go ahead and kick this off here. We'll start with actual to budget comparison for fiscal year in June 30. So we have wrapped up audit and compared budget to actuals and have some positive news for the year. So starting with, this is solely the general fund as well, not our special revenue funds. But for the general fund revenue summary for the year, total revenues for fiscal year '24 equal just over $20 million. This was a $2 million increase over budget expectations. Most of this increase was attributable to lower than actual estimates of property tax revenues. So those property valuations stayed higher this year and we received those in both property tax secured and unsecured. And then we also had higher than expected short-term rental activity through year end. So that would be what attributed to that increase in comparison to budget. Just reviewing some of the major revenue sources for the town this year. First is sales tax revenue, which contributed 4.8 million in annual revenues. Growth patterns have continued to vary based off of changes in consumer spending trends and inflation through the latter half of fiscal year '24. So you see, starting in 2020, we went down and then up high. And then we're kind of, we haven't quite resumed normal revenue trends for sales tax, but I believe that will occur through this next fiscal year. So some of the variance for that over the last fiscal year was a redistribution of sales tax from major online retailers. So for instance, if you have any of the major online retailers, build a new distribution center either inside San Bernardino County or outside of it. They will redistribute a lot of their activity, which increases and decreases the town's share in the county pool. So that's one reason. Another is just consumer trends, inflationary pressures, changes in consumer retail spending, restaurant activity. So a lot of changes over the year. But I do think that we will see some normal growth trends over, or normal trends over the next fiscal year. Overall, sales tax decreased by 2%, which is a trend expected to continue as well. Jumping over to transient occupancy taxes. So this is the tax collected for any of our hotels or short-term vacation rentals. This tax revenue source continued to increase year over year with a total of 4.2 million in revenues in fiscal year '24. This was a 14% increase from the prior year and a $3.8 million of that was attributed to short-term vacation rentals only. So the majority of that revenue source was from STVRs. The total permit and rental activity has dissipated year-to-date in our current fiscal year and growth trends are expected to slow down as well. So this is a graph comparing all of the major revenue sources. So overall, property tax contributed 37% of annual revenues with sales tax at 23% and a combination of franchise and TOT revenues at 28%. So this is revenues in comparison to prior year. So you'll see revenue growth totaled 1.7 million, largely attributable to property tax valuation increases in that TOT activity that I mentioned earlier. Property taxes are returning to normal growth rates of 3% to 5%. So we do expect that and it's included in our current year budget expectations as well. Moving on to general fund expenditures. Total expenditures in fiscal year '24 totaled 17.5 million. This was a 6% increase from the prior year. Contract safety increased the most year over year due to expanded services such as the new canine unit and also return of the portion of our annual Schedule A contract costs, moving some of those from measure Y to the general fund, which alleviated measure Y for some of the capital projects that are currently going on this year. So while we did see a large amount of revenue growth over the last year or the last several years, the town has managed to pace its expenditure growth in comparison. This has helped to ensure long-term sustainability, especially as it plans to significantly expand programs and services for the new aquatic and recreation facilities. In total, fiscal year '24 reported an excess of revenues over expenditures of 4.4 million. So again, comparing major expenditure types for fiscal year '24. Contract safety continues to be the town's major expenditure category, accommodating 38% of the town's general fund expenditures, personnel services at 37% and operating supplies and services at 25%. Town departments continue to implement beneficial cost savings town-wide and their regular oversight of their program spending trends benefits the town's overall fiscal results in fiscal year '24 as well. So after the year ends, we can track all of our revenues and expenditures and we have an overall fund balance for the general fund. The town's general fund reserves include several different types. We have our assigned fund balances for catastrophes, risk management and pension funding. Those are all assigned by council every year during this presentation. At the end of fiscal year '24, total general fund balance was 22.6 million and there is a remaining 16 million of unassigned funds at year end. So the town's reserve policy for that unassigned balance is to allow the general fund to maintain an unassigned fund balance of 60% to 65% of annual expenditures. The town's fiscal year '24 results report a 94% level of unassigned reserve funds in comparison to annual expenditures. Therefore, it is recommended to reduce unassigned general fund reserves by $4 million and allocate those funds to capital project reserve funds. So as a summary of that 4 million, it will be very simply broken up between $500,000 for vehicle and equipment replacement program and then 3.5 million will be allocated to unassigned capital project funding. One important portion of the reserve policy for the town council to remember is that there is an allocation requirement of 50% of excess reserves toward the town's unfunded pension liability. The town's pension policy considers the liability funded if current assets maintain over 90% of the total pension liability. So as of fiscal year '24, we utilize the town's actuarial reports and consultant evaluations of the town's pension unfunded liability. So when you combine the town's CalPERS assets, the PARs 115 trust, which the town council set up several years ago, and the additional $1 million in assigned pension reserves, which are invested in the Chandler Asset Management Program. All three of those asset types have contributed to a total of 94% of the town's outstanding pension liability, which is considered fully funded as of this fiscal year. So after this reserve policy allocation, if it's approved this evening, the current fiscal year's unassigned funds will total 12.4 million and accommodate 64% of the annual budgeted expenditures. The capital project reserve fund, which expects to receive the total of 4 million from this transfer, will have a total of 5.8 million in available funding. These reserves are currently unassigned, but will be beneficial to the monitoring of current capital projects, which we have a lot of. And then will also be available to assist those projects if any contingencies arise or for future project allocations. So the recommended action for council this evening is to receive and file the budget report for fiscal year ended June 30, '24 and then amend the '24, '25 general fund budget and special revenue fund budget by transferring 4 million from the general fund unassigned fund balance in accordance with the reserve policy as recommended. I'll be available after public comment, thank you.
Thank you, Jordan. Now's the time, is there anyone in the public, either online or in person, that would like to comment on this item, number eight? No one, anybody on the town council on this side? Over here?
I just have a comment. I'd like to say thank you, Jordan, for the presentation and the good news. And I appreciate yourself and staff for the hard work. It seems like our aggressive management with unfunded liabilities over the last few years has really led us into a position where we're able to provide better services for our community. And I'm very proud of that and still maintaining a fully funded pension system for our employees. And so I think that's a big part of what we're supposed to do is provide security for everyone that helps us with the town. One thing that was really stood out to me is that we've seen franchise tax and TOT outpace sales tax in our community. And I thought that was kind of a shocking number right there, how it's exponentially grown over the last few quarters. But thank you for that.
Okay, thank you. Well, item 8.1 is just receive and file. But item 8.2 is we have to amend the '23, '24 general fund budget and special revenue funds budget by transferring 4 million from the general fund unassigned fund balance in accordance with the reserve policy as recommended. So would anyone like to move on that item?
Mayor Protem, I'll make the motion to move the item forward as presented.
Well, I'll second that.
Council members, Abel?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Schooler?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Dros?
Yes. Now we're moving on to item number nine, Yucca Valley Aquatics Recreation Center Quarterly Project Update.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council members. And thank you, Jordan, I can't spend more money now, appreciate it. The item before you tonight is the Yucca Valley Aquatic Recreation Center Quarterly Project Update. And the recommendation before you tonight that the town council receive and file the Yucca Valley Aquatic Recreation Center Project Quarterly Report Project Update. So what we have is, we have our project management team online that they would like to present that to you and to the council and to the public. So Jen, you can go ahead. Can you hear me?
There it is.
Oh, go ahead.
I can hear you, you can hear me now?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you. So good evening, my name is Jen Mankia Wagner and I'm with, here with Dolan Burkhauser. We are the project managers with Dolan, working in collaboration with the town of Yucca Valley. Together, we have been overseeing the project alongside Safe Work, the construction manager, HMC, the architect of record, and RC Construction, the general contractor. And it is my pleasure to present the first quarterly update to the town. The team has generated a quarterly update to provide a project overview of the construction progress and developments for the Yucca Valley Aquatic and Recreation Center. As you are aware, the facility will provide the community with a recreation pool, water play area, locker facilities, multipurpose rooms, gymnasium and outdoor gathering spaces. As of September of this year, we are in phase two of the project, which transitioned from bidding to active construction. This included securing subcontractors for construction as well as finalizing logistics and the scheduling framework. Since the groundbreaking ceremony in September, significant progress has been made, including site demolition, excavation and foundational underground work for the new utilities infrastructure. Looking ahead to the next quarter, construction will focus on further underground infrastructure and earthwork. Phase one of the project was officially started in June of 2024 and the project is still projecting to be completed in June of 2026. In the quarterly report shown on your screen, you'll find some imagery highlighting construction, the construction progress in the last quarter. Row one, we have a couple of images of the groundbreaking ceremony and all those in attendance. In row two, construction images highlighting the start of underground utility work, including the sewer point of connection at the street and electrical trenching at the Miracle Field accessible parking lot. And in row three, we see some additional sewer work and trenching. And finally, the concrete pour that infilled the trench reopening the Miracle Field accessible lot. And you can go to the next page. And finally, we have a quick time lapse of the site development. We start to see the construction crews mobilizing on site, which brought in two construction trailers. The demolition team has arrived to remove existing parking lot fencing and light poles. And lastly, we see the start of excavation and earthwork. So thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the larger project team. A lot of progress has been made so far and we look forward to sharing future project updates with you.
That concludes staff report and for the update, we'll be happy to answer any questions following public comments.
Mayor Protem, just a couple other minor comments on this. This is a printed document that we are happy to share. We're going to put it on our project page. We'll have a quarterly record as this goes for the next two years toward completion. And so we'll include it into some of our community updates, include links of it just so that the public is aware, knows what the project is, knows what stage it is. I don't know if you noticed at the bottom of the quarterly report, I think you may have one at your dais, there's a timeline at the bottom that hopefully we'll continue to see that progress forward on schedule and on time. So I am very grateful for the entire team as they move that forward and providing this item as a transparency item on the projects, given its size and scale.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone in the public, either online or in person, that would like to comment on item number nine? Yes, number nine. Anybody know? Okay, any council members about this impressive project? Any comments?
I just want to say I've been driving by regularly, went by today, went by the site. There was work in progress, so that's a good sign. And it was amazing to see them still working. We have a few things to still move along to get even more progress going, but I'm excited to see it.
Hopefully, the guys out there are used to the cold, are getting used to it. Anyway, thank you, Jen. We appreciate it.
Thank you for having me.
Thanks. Now we're going to move on to item number ten, High Desert Nature Museum Update.
Yes, Mayor Protem and council members, with us this evening is museum supervisor Celeste Hildebrand to present the report. Welcome, Celeste.
Thank you. Thank you for having me here tonight to give you guys some updates on what we've been doing over at the museum, as well as what we have planned in the next coming six weeks or so. There's four areas. There are four areas that we're going to be covering tonight, so that includes our sixtieth anniversary, which was held back in October, a new logo that we have had designed for the museum, our current, as well as our upcoming twenty twenty-five exhibits, as well as some recent programming and events that we have hosted at the museum. So for anyone who's not familiar with the mission of the museum, we do focus in three main areas, and that is natural history, art, as well as culture of the Morongo Basin, as well as the Mojave Desert. So as we go through our exhibits and our programming, you'll kind of see these topics intertwined. So, starting with our sixtieth anniversary, on Saturday, October nineteenth, we had over seventy-five visitors at the museum for a night at the museum. These were family members, friends, museum patrons, and of course, town staff that came out to support us. Guests were provided food from local eatery that does. They had the most amazing charcuterie cups. Anybody who's ever eaten there, I'm sure will agree, as well as, of course, cake. You can't have a party without cake, so we had that as well. A live band was also present, so music was provided by a local band, the Melancholy Babies. They are kind of a forties to fifties swing jazz band. They were pretty incredible. We also had local artisan Tony Saurus. He has a history with the museum. He's a potter, and he was there demonstrating how to create pinch pots using local materials. It is a lot more difficult than he makes it look, but all of our visitors really enjoyed making their own pinch pots. And then we also had a community art project. This was developed by our education and engagement coordinator, Zach Fleming-Boyles, where participants could come and put their own artistic touch on some panels that will end up being hung in the courtyard right outside of the museum. And then finally, that night, we did open a History of the High Desert Nature Museum Spotlight Exhibit. This exhibit has several sections, including early years of the museum, some of the favorites from museum visitors over the last sixty years, including our Glow Room, as well as a section called From the Vault. This section currently is exhibiting some items from Elsonor Macris's personal collection that were donated to the museum by her nephew, Norm Essig. And so we're going to try to spotlight items that either have never been on display before or have not been on display for a very long time. So those items will actually switch out every few months. And then, of course, here are some visitors enjoying the evening, some familiar faces. So moving on to our new logo and merchandising for the museum. Our previous logo was seventeen years old, so we decided it was time to freshen that up. We worked with a local company, Pixon Studios. They created for us the image in the center, which is a great horned owl. Of course, the museum is known for our sculpture, our Howard Pierce Great Horned Owls out front, so we felt this was a great representation for the museum. We loved all of the animals so much, though, that we did ask them to incorporate them into a quadrant design for our sixtieth anniversary logo, which you see over on the left. And actually, that's a logo that we can use in the future as well. They provided it for us without the sixty years in the middle. With our new logos, of course, comes new signage. We currently have two new lightpole banners hanging in front of the museum that gives our operating days and hours, as well as some of the topics that we focus on, as well as new signage at the entrance, the front entrance and the back entrance of the museum. For merchandise, our new logos appear on some new stickers, which you see up there on the left, as well as on new t-shirts that we have and sweatshirts for both children and adults. In the last year, we've also updated our postcards that we have available. The previous ones were, again, about fifteen years old. These ones are from local photographers, Mitch Miller, who, he does desert landscapes, and Kevin Powell, who does wildlife photography. So moving on to our current exhibit, as well as what we have coming up in twenty twenty-five. Currently, we have Abalita's Kitchen Mexican Food Stories on display. This has opened for about just under two months it's been open. We've had over three thousand five hundred visitors come to see the exhibit. It's also given us an opportunity for some community engagement. We did put out a call for recipes, and we had four local families who contributed their traditional Mexican food recipes, as well as some family stories. We also collaborated with Yucca Valley High School and their Spanish department to provide an extra credit opportunity for their students that are in their Spanish language classes to come to the museum, interact with the exhibit, and take back a questionnaire to their teachers in order to get some extra credit, and we've already had some students taking advantage of that, which is awesome. Coming up next, we have Wondrous West, Art Tourism and National Pride. These are all visual images. They were curated by Lee Siliman, who we have had multiple exhibits of his in the past, and these capture a lot of our, what are now national parks, prior to national parks in which the government was encouraging Americans to travel west. So a lot of them are from railroad brochures, newspapers, things of that nature. After that, we have From Waste to Wonder, which is a recycled art exhibition. That one we've had twenty years running. It's one of the most popular at the museum. And coming up after that, I'm really excited about this one. It's Leonardo's Lab. This is our youth summer exhibit. It has over twelve hands-on centers for children and their parents to participate in. They can build, sketch, test. There's coding, math, all kinds of fun stuff. That one will be up all summer. That one will be followed by Avis Marvelous. Again, this is a Lee Siliman collection. He has over fifty historic engravings. They're all birds of the American West, and they date from seventeen seventy-six to eighteen ninety-six. Finally, we have Nature's Blueprints. This is another one I'm really looking forward to. Like the summer youth exhibit, this one has twelve interactive learning stations, but these ones are geared for adults, so it's kind of like the summer one in reverse, so adults can actually get in on the fun. Kids can participate as well, and they can also learn, but adults will have the opportunity to actually engage with the exhibit rather than just reading information on panels. So, events and programming. In September, in the midst of our exhibit changeover, we did host Dr. Alessandro Grippo for a Geology of the Morongo Basin lecture. It was one of our most popular lectures over the last few years. We had over sixty participants, all ages. You can even see a little one sitting there. She lasted a good long time, but, so the participants ranged in age. We also have been doing Second Saturday STEM workshops. These we tested last winter. We did two. They were very popular, so we decided for this programming period that we were going to do one per month for six months. Again, they have been incredibly popular. They are geared towards children nine to fourteen years old, but we have been able to accommodate kids from five to sixteen. The first one was the Chemistry of Cyanotypes. The second one, which we just held in November, was Creating Galilean Telescopes, and our December STEM workshop will be on Beginning Circuitry. Next, Spooktacular. So this was done, of course, in conjunction with our Recreation Department. It's done annually. I'll focus on the museum and what we did there. We had a, one of our newest volunteers, he actually works for, he's an entomologist. You can see that. He's in the far right photo, working with a little girl. He's an entomologist at UC Riverside Center for Conservation Biology. So he was able to bring in some insects, spiders, and visitors were able to get an up-close interaction with them. We also did some bat silhouette creation and fun facts, as well as an art project. And the museum was packed, as you can see. So very busy, very popular event, over a thousand people total throughout that day. In lining up with Abalita's Kitchen, we also added this year, it's the first year, we did a Dia de los Muertos, our Day of the Dead event. We had over eighty participants come into the museum for our event that day to learn more about this tradition. We created paper marigolds. They were able to do Calavera painting, as well as create their own Papel Picado banners. And finally, coming up, we do have Abalita's Kitchen Mexican Food Stories Documentary Screening. That's this Saturday. That will be attended by filmmaker and USC professor, Dr. Sarah Portnoy. She's the one that produced the documentary, as well as the grandmother in that photo, Merced Sanchez. So they will be here doing a screening of the documentary, a question and answer period, followed by a food tasting of some traditional Mexican food dishes. And then finally, of course, the holiday celebration. December seventh, the museum will be hosting Santa in the museum for photos, as well as you'll be able to create your own wooden nature ornaments. So, that wraps it up. We're not busy or anything. We also, I am very happy to say, for the second year in a row, the High Desert Nature Museum was awarded second place in the Best of the Best for Morongo Basin for Best Family Activities, so we are very proud of that as well. Yeah. So I'm happy to answer any questions or...
Thank you so much. Let me see if anyone in the public would like to ask you a question? Is there anybody online or in person? Mr. Mccone?
Elsonor Macris, is that concluded, or are there still?
It's still there. So it'll be up for a few months, yes.
Thank you.
So hers focuses on some of her Victorian pieces. It has miniature portraits, perfume bottles, and a bouquet, wearable bouquet holder, so, yeah.
Any other public comments? Okay, any comments from the dais? Any council members?
Yeah, thank you for the report, Celeste. From a council perspective, it's really easy to be supportive of the museum. You guys are doing a great job, very professional. I went to the sixtieth anniversary celebration, and just first class all the way through, well plotted out and interactive, and it's just gratifying to see how the museum has kind of taken its place under your leadership, taken its place in the community, and, you know, as a town department as well. But I hear that it's well received. When I talk to people, visitors talk about it. It's on their to-do list to go see it, so just great job, which is really easy to support that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I also appreciate all your efforts. It's very much paying off. Do you ever have an opportunity, when you had such a home run with people participating, coming to a certain lecture or activity, do you survey them how they found out about the activity?
We do. Mostly, it's word of mouth. We talk to them and ask them. We didn't, like, the recent ones, we haven't done a formal written survey. A lot of them, it's social media. They follow us on Instagram, Facebook, as well as through our newsletter, and through the Town of Yucca Valley's social media. So when we've talked to them recently, that seems to be the number one way they're finding out about our events.
Okay, and then you have a pretty good probably following of homeschool students and so forth, like the STEM projects and stuff like that?
We do. Actually, yeah, we have several groups that come in on a regular basis that we're in contact with. We've also done, I didn't include it, but we've also done several school field trips already this school year, and have homeschool trips actually planned coming up in the next few months for them to come to the museum for their own field trips. So, yeah, we do have several groups that are regulars.
Thank you. I'm bummed I won't be able to go to your next event with the food and the documentary, but I hope that's also well attended. It sounds like a lot of people are going out of their way to come and present something fantastic, so hopefully we can get the word out to everyone.
Just want to say, I think I'm missing out on a lot of good stuff, but really nice, and I really liked the sixtieth anniversary, the artwork that you presented. I see a lot of different types of art presented, trying to demonstrate our town through that image, and that one was really, really hit home with the selection of, you know, the horned owl, the rabbit, and just more of the very common animals that we have in our area, surrounded by beautiful artwork and colors, kind of relayed into the artwork you were talking about displaying outside in the courtyard, too. Same color theme. But one thing I noticed is it looks like you're starting to bust at the seams a little bit for some of those events.
We really are.
Is that a challenge for you, or do you have a plan for?
It is. I mean, hopefully, there's plans in the works for even extending some of our space to outside in our courtyard area. That's something that I've been speaking with Sue Ernest about, so we do have that hopefully in the works, because we are kind of busting at the seams, and we do have to limit how many people we can accommodate, so.
Yeah, and I think those crowds, as long as they're all kind of looking for the same type of stimulus, you know, to be creative and curious and all that, you don't want to slow that down if you don't have to.
Right.
I would be in support of seeing some kind of outdoor, indoor thing to help you out.
Okay, good. Thank you.
I just want to say, it's obvious, all the hard work all of you are doing, but I really want to comment on the logo. I think that is incredible. I'm in love with that logo, so.
Thank you. So are we.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
So that was the receive and file. So now we're on to item number eleven, Town Project Number Five Zero Zero Five, Yucca Valley Senior Center Modernization Phase Two Project Budget Amendment Award of Bid to SPEC Construction Company Incorporated.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council member. Yet another project, exciting project that we would like to deliver to the residents of the town of Yucca Valley. The project before you tonight is the Yucca Valley Senior Center Modernization Project Phase Two, and this is award of construction contract. So the recommendation before you tonight is several items that I would like to read. The first one is to adopt a resolution amending the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five special revenue funds budget for a total project budget of three million dollars by appropriating one point two million from SRF twenty twenty-two Debt Service Fund, twenty-two two two, and four hundred and seven thousand from Capital Project Reserve Fund Eight Hundred, as identified in Exhibit A that is attached to the staff report. And then, you know, the second one is to approve the award of construction contract with the Spec Construction Company, Inc., in the amount of two million one hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars to construct the Yucca Valley Senior Center Modernization Phase Two Project, and authorize construction contingency in the amount of two hundred and twenty thousand and inspection costs in a total amount of two million four hundred and forty-three thousand, and also approve a purchase of the DIRTT wall system, which is what we call DIRTT, in the amount of sixty-eight thousand fifty-five dollars and three cents, and office furniture for the, after the project's completed, in the amount of thirty-nine thousand six hundred and four seventy-four from GM Business Interiors. And then finally, authorize the mayor, town manager, and town attorney to execute the agreement and authorize the town manager or designee to expend contingency funds if necessary for the project completion. So basically, what we're doing with this project is right now, is we are modifying the existing bathroom that we have in the senior center right now, and that is, after we complete with this, it will be ADA compliant restrooms. Also, we have decided to, you know, a little bit organize the office area that we have in the senior center. That is, will include the front counter, include the waiting area, conference room, and offices for the staff that is right now occupying the senior center. Also, part of this project, which is a little bit raised up the cost for it, is we have to do some ADA path of travel construction that is take us to, we can, for ADA access and for ADA compliance, so we are doing sidewalk from the center all the way to Anaheim, and the parking lot. So we are doing sidewalk from the center all the way to Ana Lo and the parking lot that is existing right now. So most of the sidewalk that we have in there have to be removed because it's not ADA accessible. So now we have to do all of that so we can, you know, have an accessible path of travel for the senior center. Also, part of this project will be, after we're done, because we're going to be removing some of the landscaping, is the, sorry, is the landscaping, so we are doing some land, new landscaping, give it a new life for the senior center. Also, in addition, we are going to be painting the outside of the senior center to include the, the color theme that you have here is, after tremendous amount of discussion with staff, staff members, that is occupying the senior center and the recreation, and also the town manager's office, that is, we came up with that scheme that is really, will give it, after it's done, give it the look, and we will be adding to it the logos or, and the senior center name on it, so it will be modernized in a way. So the, we received two bids for this project. The first bid was from the Spec Construction, it was in the amount of $2,173,000. Also, we received another bid from Robert Claver Construction in the amount of $2,204, which has given us relief that we are in the ballpark, because they were very close. So the town have reviewed the bid packages and confirmed that Spec Construction Company of Ontario, California is the lowest responsible and responsive bidder with the amount, with a total bid of $2,173,000, with the anticipated six-month construction timeline. If ordered by the council, we are expecting this completed by August of 2025. So based, but as you can tell, there is some services that is going on right now at the senior center, so we have a site closure coordination that is, we are going to be sharing with the contractor, in a matter of fact, it was shared with the contractor, that is, will start the phase so we can keep the kitchen, which is the most important portion of that, open at all the time. So with that being said, I would like Sue can go over what the actual existing activities that go in the center and how we're going to manage that going forward through the construction period. Sue?
So, this isn't our first rodeo, right? With community services and closure of the senior center. We did the improvements to the kitchen, of course, a while back, where we were closed for five months, so we're acclimated with moving our programs from the senior center here to the community center. So community services staff has already reviewed the schedule, we'll go to focus on Monday, Wednesday, Friday. We want to retain our classes, such as balance and chair yoga, and some of these classes where our seniors have made personal gains that we don't want them to lose. So we want to make sure that we are selective, we can't offer a full slate of programming, but we'll definitely move over the classes that we feel are essential. We'll also make sure we add some Saturday events, we want to keep them socially engaged as well, so we have some Saturday events, a dance, Wellness Day, barbecue when the weather gets nicer, so we'll sprinkle those throughout as well. We are working with the county contractor, FSA, on the food service and how we're going to orchestrate that over here, knowing that they can still use the kitchen, but we can't have service over there, we'll coordinate that here. And then we'll also deal with the relocation of staff and some of our other contractors' workstations during the construction period. So we're confident that we can still offer a robust seniors' programming here at the community center, we've done it before, and we're confident that we can make, we're super excited about the improvements, by the way. It's going to be really, really great.
Thank you, Sue. And so with that being said, that is the budget for the, as was read in the recommendation, the county ARPA fund, which is what we received from the county, thanks to our supervisor, Don Ra, for that generous donation, $998,000. We have a 2022 debt service proceed of $1.2 million. We have CDBG funding of $395,000 and Capital Project Reserve Fund of $407,000 for a total of $3 million. But the project cost in construction, you have the construction bid amount at $2,173,000, construction contingency of $220,000, the DIRTT wall at $68,055.03, and the FFNE, which is the furniture for the, after we completed, that will be at $39,674.74. And inspection and testing will be at the amount of $50,000, for a total construction cost of $2,550,659.70. So with the recommendation before you tonight is the council to adopt the resolution, amending the 2024-25 special revenue funds budget for a total budget of $3 million, and approve the award of construction contract with the Spec Company, Construction Company, in the amount of $2,173,000. Authorize the construction and construction contingency in the amount of $220,000 and inspection costs in the total amount of $2,443,000. Approve the purchase of the DIRTT wall system in the amount of $68,055.03, and office furniture in the amount of $39,674.74. And authorize the mayor, town manager, and town attorney to execute the agreement and authorize the town manager or designee to expend contingency funds if necessary for project completion. That concludes staff report, we'll be more than happy to answer any questions following public comments.
Mayor Protam, just two additional comments. You may have noticed on the budget alignment, the budget allocation is $3 million, total cost right now are $2.5. We're currently looking at some potential alternatives for assistance in project management on a day-to-day basis, so that may come back before you. We wanted to ensure that we had that allocation allowance. If that does, it'll come back before the council for approval in, probably in the consent agenda item. Secondly, it may be an opportunity for staff to kick around some ideas on naming. We have a number of different facilities that we've been thinking about reviewing our naming policy. The senior center may be one of those that I think a lot of activity centers are more reflective now of some of the changes that we've seen in demographics using those types of facilities, and so they may be an activity center, it may be named after somebody or something, so that may be an opportunity for us to do that as we look at kind of rebranding that entire facility. So those are the only two additional comments we wanted to add.
Okay, thank you. Anyone in the public, would you like to comment on this item, number 11? I see in here none, thank you. Let's bring it back to the council. Would anyone like to make a comment on this?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. First of all, you said it's a six-month project, so you're talking about starting in February and going all the way to August?
At this point of time, that is my, the expectation for the project to start in February, it could start earlier, but whatever time it starts, it's how the contractor have six months to complete.
Okay, and then explain again how we're going to do food services during that time for our seniors, again?
So we have a couple of options. We've had discussions with FSA, we could go to a situation where we serve, they can prepare the food over there, they would have to transport it over here to the Yucca Room to do a food service. We could do that once or twice a week, and as during COVID, or like during our prior closure, they gave them frozen meals for the rest of the week. So that's an option that was discussed originally, because we didn't know for sure until just recently that the kitchen was going to be open the entire time. So we'll have to work through the logistics of whether or not FSA, they will be cooking there every day, because that is the kitchen that prepares the meals for Joshua Tree and 29 Palms as well. So working out the logistics of whether or not it's worthwhile to every single day of the week, you know, Monday through Friday, to bring the food over for a hot food service, we're going to work that out with them and see, you know, what their capabilities are. Nonetheless, everyone will get, make sure that...
Well, yeah, but as a lot of those seniors over there, it's the more of the social interaction, having a hot meal, and then saying, well, thanks for coming, here's a frozen dinner, head on home, you know?
Well, we wouldn't just turn them around like that.
I know, I know. So has any of the seniors, are they aware of the possible project and things coming up and the disruption it might cause? Okay. Special reserve funds budget, explain that again to me, that there's all budgets and we have money here and there, and explain that to me one more time. Special reserves funds budget. Because Alex was talking about spending money, we just set aside, I didn't know if that's where he was getting it.
So, Mayor and council, and Jordan, you can jump in here anytime if you have anything additional. So let me just run through packet page 1, 3, 4. These are your fiscal impact, these are your sources of funds that we wanted to highlight. Line number one is the County ARPA fund. Those funds are provided by San Bernardino County, basically COVID funds. Those need to be expended, committed by the end of this year, and then spent down by 2026, December 31st, 2026. I'll come back to the debt service fund. CDBG fund is a couple of years of allocation, we may be able to add to that. You'll probably see this on your recommendation at your next council meeting for the allocation for CDBG funding, it's a great project for that type of funding as it's restricted. So that is the 395. Capital Project Reserve Fund is your more general, basically bucket of funding where you have excess general fund monies, like you allocated this evening. When you have additional revenues over expenditures, that goes into your capital reserve fund. Those are widely available for any type of project that the council wants to do. And then the 2022 Debt Service Proceeds Fund was part of the $20 million debt service financing that we completed in 2022. That's available for capital projects. We've identified the senior center, we've identified the Yucca Valley Aquatics and Rec Center, and we've identified the Town Hall consolidation project as the primary projects that will be using that $20 million of funding. So in this project, 1.2 of that is going toward the senior center project.
And then how many, how much is coming out of the Capital General Reserve Fund?
$407,000.
Okay.
Jordan, was there anything else that you want to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that this budget allocation does not include any of the reserves recommended to move into the Capital Project Reserve Fund this evening, so this is before that transfer would occur, and does not touch those additional funds. Sorry, the Zoom wasn't letting me unmute for a minute there.
All right, thank you.
Any other council members want to comment?
I'm sorry, one other thing, what I'd like to really look into, I mean, we're talking about a lot of money being spent for the benefit of the seniors, and if we have to spend a little bit more to give them hot meals during this time, or more often, or whatever, you know, I would like us to consider that, because it is an inconvenience and we have great participation and, you know, they'll love the facility once it's done, but it can be hard. Six months doesn't sound like much to us until you get disshovelled to another location, then it doesn't feel, feels longer than six months.
Las Palmas. Any other council members? Okay, so item number 11, since Alex read through the whole thing, can we just have a motion in a second? Okay. Okay, would anybody like to move on item 11?
Mayor Protam Dennison will move item number 11 as presented by town staff.
Oh, second.
Councilmembers, Abel?
I appreciate the county's participation, yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Schooler?
Yes.
And Mayor Protam Dros?
Yes. Next is item number 12, which everybody loves, the Land Development Update Report.
Good evening, Mayor and council. The recommended action this evening is that the council receive and file the Land Development Update Report. I'll run through these very briefly, this, these reports are available on the town's webpage. Staff attempts to keep these updated on a monthly basis so that changes that have occurred during that month are reported and available to the public. First project is at Joshua Springs, they are proposing to add a almost 10,000 square foot gymnasium to the existing site. The gymnasium is not for the purpose of adding any new additional programs, or staffing, or students, but it's to allow for the current gymnasium to serve as the sanctuary and the gym, the new gym to function as the gymnasium. So no additional traffic is anticipated, no additional impacts, a pretty straightforward project. Domino's and Jersey Mike's, the permit has been issued to a licensed contractor, they can start construction at any time. Their start date is completely up to them, they have not communicated a start date to us as of today. Starbucks West, Starbucks West permits have been approved by Building and Safety and sitting on the front counter, per se, for a couple of months now. Their schedule for pulling those permits, again, is completely up to them. Time Warner, new facility, small facility, unmanned facilities on Lock and Tena, it's another project that's been approved by the Yucca Valley Planning Commission, and they can proceed with submittal for building permits at their discretion and their timeline. Cell phone tower, proposed in town, they are working on environmental documents at this point in time. They have at least one more environmental document to submit to the town, and then we'll be, staff will be proceeding with the California Environmental Quality Act review process. Hopefully that will begin to move forward in that sequel process, and we'll be in front of the Planning Commission with that project in the first quarter of '25. That's just another image of what that cell tower looks like. Sun Mesa Mini Storage, this site is north and a little bit west of where Burt Tech used to be, up off of Buena Vista. They have completed all but two of their environmental studies. As soon as those are submitted to the town, we will be receiving proposals for the sequo document. That sequo document will be prepared, circulated in accordance with state law, and then scheduled for public hearing before the Yucca Valley Planning Commission. In total, it's about 90,000 square feet of mini storage facilities, be quite an undertaking and quite a project. Tumbleweed Sanctuary, which the council is aware of, they have made some revisions to their plans. They are, they have retained the services of an architect to assist them. I would define right now that they are moving relatively slowly, not quite at a snail's pace, but pretty close. As soon as they choose to submit everything that's required and move forward, then that project will be proceeding through the hearing process. This is the former Cole Michael Salon, this is the project as approved by the Yucca Valley Planning Commission, quite a transition of that structure. Mexican food, tequila bar in the west end of town, when implemented, that will be a great improvement to Old Town in the west end. Tiny Pony recently received approval for an outdoor patio, they're in the plan check process for both engineered grading plans as well as building plans for that outdoor venue area on the backside of their, of their existing structure. The Star Cafe, this, I'm sure the town council recalls this project, the former Diamond Automotive Repair Site, has been approved by the Yucca Valley Planning Commission, the building plans have been approved, and a contractor has pulled those permits. This is another example of a project where they can begin construction at any time, and that construction schedule is totally in their hands. Nice Dreams Ice Cream, going into the former, many people recall it as the Strata Tattoo Building, that was the tenant space closest to Highway 62. Their construction process continues to move forward. As I recall from discussions with Building and Safety, I believe they are in the drywall phase, drywall nailing for the next inspection will be drywall nailing, and then they'll be able to start taping and texturing and getting ready to get down to the finish level on their project. That's one of the, that's a shot of their exterior. Palo Alto, five-unit apartment complex, one of the first multifamilies completed in Yucca Valley since incorporation, so that project is done. If you ever get a chance to drive by and take a look at it, a great addition to the housing inventory in Yucca Valley. Another mini storage facility proposed in the west end of town, down on Yucca Trail, 606 self-storage units. This project's moving pretty slow, the applicant chose to prepare, have prepared for them their environmental special studies, they are in the process of moving forward with those studies, but would be defined as moving relatively slowly. but would be defined as moving relatively slowly. Another multifamily project on Palo Alto, this fourplex, whereas the previous one was a fiveplex. This project has been approved by the Planning Commission and has been submitted into Building and Safety for building permits. It's a project down on Omegle Trail. It's an old, 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 single-family type home that is proposed to become retail. The owner's having some discussions about maybe a bakery, maybe not a bakery. We'll see ultimately when they finalize their application what's included on that list, but this will add some variety to that part of Old Town, which is mostly industrial and some outdoor uses. Yucca Valley Materials Lab is a project up by around Sunflower and State Route 247. Looking at converting a former farm supply and feed store to an art studio. They've run into a little bit of difficulty with legal access, and they're trying to work out legal access issues in order for their project to continue moving forward. Tentative Parcel Map, very small project, taking one five-acre parcel, splitting it into two five-acre parcels. Sorry, two two-and-a-half acre parcels. This project is at the initial stages of completeness review and getting ready to move forward through the process to be scheduled for hearing before the Planning Commission. As the council knows, we have some informal review processes, whether it's our Development Review Committee or pre-applications where people can come and talk with planning, engineering, and building and safety staff at little to no cost for their projects to be reviewed, and there's been a number of projects that have gone through that process. One that actually appears to be moving forward is the first one on the list, which is the Super Walmart fueling station. This is one of the preliminary site plans that shows that fueling station. It is, their design is to capture customers that are already visiting the store. They are not designing this project to pull traffic off of the highway. It's to capture their existing customer base. This project's going to require an amendment to the specific plan, which was approved for the Super Walmart site, as well as either an addendum to the environmental impact report or a supplemental environmental impact report for the project. So you will have Planning Commission public hearings, and you will have Town Council public hearings on this item for them to obtain final approvals. They are in the process of completing the applications and being ready to submit that into town staff for review. You've heard us talk about Circle K. This was the preliminary layout at the northwest corner of Avalon and State Route 62. It included areas for RV fueling, semi-parking, RV parking, a fast food restaurant, convenience store, EV chargers, as well as your typical fuel islands for fueling. They scaled the project back, they scaled the project back, eliminating the semi-area, the RV parking area. So it'll be interesting to see ultimately what they walk in the door with. Former Bank of America building being converted to the Lighthouse Christian Center. They're in the process of preparing plans to submit into Planning and Building and Safety. Planning Commission action is required for the change of use from a bank to a church. They also plan on, when the church is not operating, operating a commercial coffee shop from that location. So it'll be an interesting, interesting project that goes before the Planning Commission. Dutch Brothers has been in conversations with town staff for quite some time about the vacant parcel between Walgreens and Big Five. This kind of shows what that layout looks like. They're continuing to have discussions. They have not made a formal application yet for any location in town, but we know that they are looking very diligently in their efforts to open within Yucca Valley. This is an old Don Landers building, built back in the, probably the early 80s. I believe he may have actually operated his office from this on Santa Fe Trail for a few years. Gentleman has acquired that property and is looking at converting it into a live-work environment. So that would be an interesting, be a first, I think, desirable. It's part of the Old Town specific plan. West End, a very desirable project if it moves forward. This was a pre-application for a furniture store down in the east end of town, off of Hanford and 29 Palms Highway. They went through that pre-app process and received feedback from staff on what the likely process and requirements would be for their project. Mojave Flea, which is the old post office down the west end of town, is looking at some additional square footage being added, which would be a restaurant on a ground floor level and the second floor being an apartment. So they've gone through that pre-application, received feedback from staff, and I'm sure they're evaluating what their options are for their project. That concludes the staff presentation this evening. We'd be happy to answer any questions following public comment.
Thank you, Shane. Does anybody in the public have any questions about, about item number 12, Land Development Report? Any comments? No? Anything from the council?
Yeah, thank you. I really appreciate that update. A lot of things going on. Had a question. With the mini storage units, obviously they don't command a whole lot of jobs after construction's done. Is there like, are those units, are they part of our tax revenue that comes in? Is that a taxable item?
So property tax is applied to any improvements that are, improvements that are made onto private property. So that would be your primary revenue generator from something such as that.
Okay, since they're leasing, that's not a sales tax type situation, since it's a lease.
No, no, sir.
I love seeing the mixed family, mixed-use living and work, that people are thinking about that because we talk about getting more livable spaces for people, apartments and things like that. So I think that's a great concept. I didn't know, since these are in the Old Town area, they're already approved for those types of mixed-use projects?
So, yes, the projects that you've seen this evening are allowed per the Old Town specific plan.
And then my question was over by the old High Desert Star building, those shopping thing. Is that in the Old Town district where a mixed-use project could go in, or would that have to be changed in zoning?
So that is not within the Old Town specific plan, but mixed-use being defined as a combination of residential and commercial is allowed by town code.
Okay.
So a person would not need to amend the codes in order to have residential and commercial together.
Okay, very good. Well, that's, that's great news as well. The Omegle Project, is that the old Boy Scout building, or is that a different one?
No, this is a different one. This was acquired by Action Pumping a number of years ago for use as an overflow. It's kind of close to their operation. So no, it is not the old Boy Scout building. The council is aware that the old Boy Scout building has been approved as a medicinal marijuana distribution point. The town does not allow for walk-in customers at those locations, but the state law, state mandated all cities within the state to allow for distribution of medicinal marijuana, and that's what the current remodeling effort at the old Boy Scout building is underway for.
I've noticed we've had a lot of improvement along the corridor. The staff's done a great job of reaching out to property owners about trash on their property and weeds, and so far I've seen some improvement. I saw the Walmart Center looked like they finally got out and started picking up all the plastic bags and the trash out there. Looks better. Landscaping's still a lot of dead stuff. Is Wal, do Walmart, do they own that shopping center when they're building another fuel station on that? Or is that still property owned by some other corporation?
I believe Walmart's the owner of the property.
So we can still continue to put pressure on them for fixing their landscaping issues as they're coming forward? Wonderful, good deal. All right, well, thank you so very, very much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Okay, so that one's done. We're going to move ahead to future agenda items. Does the council have anything they want on a future agenda?
Mayor Protem, I would like to propose to the council that staff would look into our current meeting times and days for the council and also our commissions, and see if any adjustments might be warranted to try to increase public participation. So perhaps a different day of the week would be better, or perhaps earlier or later starting times, anything like that that might help the public come and participate. We had good participation tonight, which is not always the case, but I thought it might be good to look into that. I also know some agencies are changing their start times and their dates, so we don't want to be competing against another public agency, but we also want to be accessible to as many residents as possible. So if, if you could support that, maybe staff could look into those times and dates and see if we need to make adjustments.
Now, council member, I would support that.
Okay, so that's it. Now we have public comments. The town council takes its time to consider your comments on items of concern, which are not on the agenda. When you are called to speak, please state your name and community of residence. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Inappropriate behavior which disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the meeting will result in the forfeiture of your public comment privileges. The town council is prohibited by state law from taking action or discussing items not on the printed agenda. So is there anyone in the public that would like to make a comment? It looks like we have one person.
Mayor Protem, we have a request to speak by Susie Dick.
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you for letting me come up here. I'm here to announce that we're having our annual celebration of the Birth of Jesus Christ event at the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints in Yucca Valley, and you're invited. That's what I want to tell you. It's a wonderful activity. It's, I wrote some stuff down. So it's a family event oriented. Let me get my glasses now. It's scheduled for December 7th, 10:00 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. We, it's called Celebrating the Birth of Jesus Christ. It's a beautiful nativity display and a musical fest with local artists and a performance, a new performance every 30 minutes, and it's open to the community, which we have several community members who are bringing their nativities to share with us, and we're excited about that. The more we get, the more we get to see and look at it. Last year, we had some beautiful shepherds that guarded the nativities so that they were kept safe, and they were handmade by two of the, two ladies that are, that attend my church, which is the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. And they, they stand there and they keep people far enough away that they can get close enough to the nativities that they can look at them closely, but yet they, they're, they're far enough away that they can't really touch them or bother them in any way, so they're protected by them. We have a fun photo booth. It's set up with a period authentic costumes and photos taken with the person's camera, or phone, rather, and that's an opportunity to kind of get into the mood of being in the Christmas spirit. At a room, we have a room specifically set up for the children so that they have a place to play with, with children's nativities sets. They can handle them, play with them, throw them. They're there for them to play with. They also have nativity puzzles, stickers, and coloring pages so that they have time to be there and their parents. We ask that the parents are there with them, so it's a family-oriented activity throughout the whole building. We have refreshments served, which are homemade cookies and some really cold water, so we want to invite you. We are expecting a good turnout this year. We had about 120 nativities from last year. And we made a video of it, and if you'd like to see it, I think, Leslie, do you have it downloaded in your computer so you could share it with them? And I have also passed out a flyer for all of the information that's on there. If you are, know anyone that's interested in giving, turning in a nativity, let them call me. My information is on the card, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions? No?
But thank you very much. Great information.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the public that would like to make a comment? I see none. Let's see here. Let's go to staff reports and comments.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Captain, Deborah, Alex.
Well, be brief. Good evening. As the council might remember, every January, we do, we partner with the Office of Homeless Services for San Bernardino County for the Point in Time Count. That's coming up very quickly. So I just wanted to let you know that the date for that is Thursday, it's always the fourth Thursday of January. So Thursday, January 23rd. More information will be forthcoming regarding training, volunteer registration, and also the time that we will be conducting the count, so thank you.
Thanks, Deborah. Alex, Sue, want to talk quickly about our December events?
Yes. So more holiday events. We've got the Senior Center Thanksgiving Lunch this Thursday, the 21st, at the Senior Center. The High Desert Nature Museum Celeste mentioned, the Abalita's Kitchen Film, Food, and Conversation this Saturday, November 23rd at 2:00 p.m. with that documentary screening and the food tasting. And then the Tree Lighting Ceremony, December 4th, from 5:00 to 7:00 at the Library Plaza. Our Holiday Celebration, December 7th, from 10:00 to 3:00 here at the Community Center, and that's the snow play with the 80 tons of snow. Santa Visits, the Craft Fair where you can get all your shopping done, and the Youth Commission offering free hot cocoa and cookies. Then the rodeo, the Rotary Festival of Light Parade on December 14th. And also just wanted to mention, Celeste did mention, the museum's Best of the Best Award, second place for family activity. Our Senior Center also won first place again for the Best of the Best as well. So we're super excited about that, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Sue, Tom, Shane. There's two comments. Mayor and Council highly recommend, if you get the opportunity to participate, drop in some lunchtime at the Senior Center on one of these events. You'd be absolutely amazed in Florida how many participants we have there. So council member Abel, your comments are well taken, and we'll try and be creative in what we look at for options. Last comment I have is, we had the opportunity recently to meet with the 29 Band of Mission Indians. You'll recollect that as a sovereign nation, our relationship with the, with the tribe is agency to agency. So it's obviously never appropriate for us to talk about what they may have going on. That's their, their role. And so they do have tribal reservation land here in Yucca Valley and are in the process of looking at different options there, and so information may be coming forth from the tribe on what they have planned for their, for their reservation land. That's it for tonight. Thank you.
Hey, thank you for all those reports. Let's see here. Mayor and Council reports and comments. So let's start with council member Abel.
Yeah, I would like to thank staff for including the quarterly reports on the ARC project. I think that's going to be very, very helpful and keep us informed on how things are moving. Appreciate it. I attended Mojave Desert Air Quality Management Meeting. They had a very unique and wonderful presentation by Brightline West. They, it's the all-electric rail system that's going to be going from Southern California out to Las Vegas. I found it very interesting. It's going to be 218 miles of track with speeds up to 200 miles per hour. It'll be built inside the I-15, so it has very little environmental impact since it's already been impacted by the freeway. The results are, they're hoping that a potential $3 million, $3 million less vehicles per year and a decrease in highway deaths as people might be taking the train as an alternative to driving. Of course, that will increase construction jobs for the four-year project of over 35,000 jobs and 1,000 permanent jobs once it's completed. 50 million annual trip is how many cars go to and from Los Angeles to Las Vegas each year. And 85% of the, I mean, 50 million annual trips to Las Vegas from LA, 85% of those are those are in vehicles. So it will make a less impact, but there's still going to be a lot of traffic still going out there. The goal is to open in 2028, and it would take you from, from the starting point, Rancho Cucamonga, to actual Las Vegas, two hours and 10 minutes. So it's twice as fast as taking a car. They'll have stations in Hisperia, Victorville, and of course, in Las Vegas, starting in Rancho Cucamonga. They're going to start all these projects in different locations at the same time, so it will help speed up the process. And then eventually Metro Link Regional Rail from LA could link up to Rancho Cucamonga. So people from LA could get on the Metro Link and then be able to get on the speed train, the electric train. Of course, I attended the Yucca Valley Film Festival, which was great, another great year. Got the chance to meet with a lot of the producers and, and actors and so forth, and just ask them how they chose to come to Yucca Valley and submit a film, and they were giving just really good reviews on how personal it was and what a great event. And it was word of mouth, some of them heard from other people, that you need to put your film in this one. So that's great, that we're doing a great job there. Briefly spoke to our California State Senator in the 23rd District about the impact of what districting has done. As you know, those last elections, we had two school board positions not even applied for, and we had two council members, or two council districts that were unopposed. So talking to her about the impact of less and less people participating in the electoral process, she was very, very aware of that, and she had equal concerns. So she was definitely talking about taking that back and having that review to see if some things can be done for smaller communities, because it doesn't seem to be working for small communities. Also, I talked to her a lot about our film festival and art tours, which she wasn't aware of, and plan on sending her some information on that. Spoke to Chad Mays real quickly about the California Air Resources Board's latest proposal on lower carbon fuel standards. They currently have a 20% reduction in transportation fuel carbon. They want to increase that to 30% and 90% by 2024, which sounds great, except it will probably increase gas prices in California, as the rest of the nation will probably see lower gasoline. It will increase gas prices in California. And I, I shared with, with former Assemblyman Mays how financially our community is not economically advanced as much as some other areas, and it's going to be a harder impact on us. Out here, we don't have high salaries, and a lot of those people have to commute, because we're from the desert. So it's going to be a necessary and an extra burden on our residents. So the car board might be moving in the wrong direction as far as that is concerned. I also had a brief conversation with Supervisor Paul Cook about, and we both shared the same concerns about maintaining fire breaks, and I'll need to talk to some of you fire specialists on whether those are effective in, in defending our wildfires. But he was concerned about it as well as myself, and we had a great conversation on that and about fire services in general. Attended the builders and realtors meeting, received the staff update like you guys got to see tonight, and also had a chance to hear from local contractors and realtors. I got inquiry from a local businessperson considering doing a new mural in town, and so I steered them towards the staff, explaining the policy on murals. I'm all for something that beats our, fits our town standard and dresses up some of our older buildings, and so hopefully they'll follow through with that and get some, we'll get a new mural in town. A resident contacted me about pothole situation. I contacted staff and very short period of time, it was repaired and done. So I, I know Councilmember Dennison has responded how quickly staff gets to those issues. So Alex, those people in the, in the traffic and, and roads did a great job of getting out there and taking care of this residence concerned. Again, I want to thank Shane and his staff for the improvements I've seen on the highway as far as trash pickup and weeding. We still have a long way to go, but I think we're definitely moving in the right direction. And I see graffiti's been removed, and we're, we're doing real well with the downtown visibility. I will be attending the November 22nd Community Prayer Breakfast. There are still tables available, which are, it's going to be fantastic, because they have a war correspondent going to be there, talking about his coverage of wars firsthand, a very dangerous job, and it'd be a very, very interesting guest speaker, a public speaker for the annual Community Prayer Breakfast. There are still tables available, or seats available, and it will be on November 22nd, 7:30 to 9:00, and that's being held at the Joshua Springs Center. That's all I have tonight.
All right, thank you very much. Councilmember Dennison.
I just wanted to say thank you to everyone. You know, this has been a really rewarding year, and I'm very thankful for our community and our community supporting us as we try to continue to bring public safety to the forefront of our mission, and also taking care of infrastructure improvements, quality of life, you know, we're looking at the Aquatic Center. So there's a lot of things that we've been doing over the year, had a lot of challenges, but it's, it's always rewarding to, to press through and get those things done. And I'm very thankful for the recent election that we've had, that the town supported us once again in Measure Y and Z. These are two measures that really benefit our community directly, and it's, it's funding directly from our community, stays in our community, and it's supported by people that visit our community. So it's, it's a big thing for us, we do a lot with it. Those of you that follow how we use those funds during the year, you understand, and there's a lot of opportunity for more in the future to continue to build our community out. So during this time, it's when we think about being with family and friends and the things that we're thankful for during Thanksgiving holiday, and I hope you find yourself well and you travel safe, and it's off to a good new year. Thank you.
Councilmember Schooler.
Sure, a couple of things, but first I'd like to follow up on, on Councilmember Abel's report about the electric train. Did they give any idea how the, the ticket prices would compare to driving or flying or anything?
You know what, I, they did not give me that number, but I'm sure it would have to be, you know, cost of, make the cost worth giving up your vehicle and so forth, but I was, and I don't have the exact number in front of me, but I was quite surprised how many trains will happen each and every day. So I could see somebody who wanted to move out of, of California and actually live in Nevada, getting on that train and coming down for work here in Southern California. So it's, it's pretty often, but I'm not sure of the cost yet, the ticket.
And that's 2028 that they're planning to be done?
Yeah.
Wow, fascinating. Okay. Just want to congratulate all the youth commissioners, the new youth commissioners. We're really looking forward to working with them. They've been, under staff's guidance, been very productive in the past few years, and it's, it's cool to see the ones that are coming back, being so excited about coming back. That's, that means we're doing, we're doing something right.
I wanted to share that some of them are working the basketball program as well.
I noticed that in their, in their letters that, you know, they are, and some of them that they either want to, or they are, they have been. So yeah, that's, that's great. Again, thanks to Jordan and Curtis and all the finance staff, the, the finances, town finances just seem to be in good hands, and we're, we're dealing with a lot of money and a lot of projects, and it just seems really tight, and appreciate that, all the, all the work on that. Good to get the project reports, both the town and the development projects. Just really excited, like to see them, if they're not already going, love to see them get going and get done. Veterans Tribute, good job, thank you. It was a good event, and appreciate that we participate in that and that we do that. And again, the film festival was a really, a good event as well. And I too have run into Senator Ochoa Bog in, in town. She's been attending fundraising things, most recently I saw her just the other night at the Partners Against Violence fundraiser, and she's really reaching out to the community, and, and she did mention those, the districts, the, the problem of districts, and so I think that's on her radar. So again, thank you. I think that's all, all for me tonight.
All right. I really have nothing to add, except we really didn't discuss, like Curtis said, the name for the Senior Center, but I think we should consider former council members' names, maybe like Bob Leoni or someone else, so that might be something to think about. But maybe we can discuss that further in the future. Anyway, that's the end of the meeting. The upcoming meeting schedule, let's see here, the regularly scheduled meeting of Tuesday, December 3rd, 2024, has been canceled due to a lack of scheduled agenda items. The next meeting of the Yucca Valley Town Council will be held on Tuesday, December 17th, 2024, at 6:00 PM in the Yucca Valley Community Center Yucca Room. And will also be the time and place for the 2024 State of the Town Address. So I'll see you all there and have a great Thanksgiving. Meeting adjourned.